That's good.
It is six o'clock. We'll call a meeting order. What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
All right. We will start with our council reports tonight. Before we get there, I will say that I did ask the chief to be here to give a department head report based on last week's incident, and I'll leave most of that to him. I will say, as for committee meetings, I attended the policies procedures meeting last week. We interviewed a candidate for a full-time police officer. Did recommend moving forward with background checking and psychological screening. So if all works out, that person will be before the council, hopefully within the coming months. And then I will just... I will just say, now I'll leave my comments regarding Larry Alston until after the chief talks. Megan?
Um, oh, okay. It was a little abrupt there. Yes, I wasn't at the last council meeting, so I'm trying to just see where I left off here. But, so I assume some of the meetings mentioned at that were the library ad hoc and the...
Could you shut that door?
The RCCIP, the Rural Child Care Initiative Foundation.
How's that going?
It's going well. We went ahead and, that was on May 15th, we went ahead and set some dates, so we do have a provider appreciation event that is taking place on September 22nd. And then, so, and that is very important to all of us, because we don't, a lot of times when these conversations happen, I think that the current providers who are, you know, in the trenches doing the work kind of worry that they're going to be left behind, or that it's going to be some sweeping thing is going to come in that's gonna, you know, hurt their business and their livelihood, and that's, you know, certainly not the case. And we want to make sure that we're working with them every step of the way. So, we have a provider appreciation event, and then there will be a town hall. I believe November 3rd is the tentative date for that, where people from, we're hoping to get a cross-section of a lot of the community who can give us their thoughts and, you know, ping pong some ideas around, and then we're gonna go from there.
Can the city help support that appreciation event in any way?
Probably. I will let you know when we get closer to it, but I'm sure that would be a great help. And then there was the EDAP meeting that we, two EDAP meetings before that one. And then, so I had a, again, not a city board, but a community foundation board, and we're moving forward with our new director that's going well. I had the city board's dinner, or the all boards dinner meeting on June 4th, and then I was also in the PD interview on June 5th.
Well, and I also, all boards meeting, thanks Megan, we're all there for that. The other one is, attended the open house for the brewery last Wednesday.
Yeah, me too.
That went, I think really well. They've got a good setup over there, and I wish them the best. So, Neil?
I also was at the annual committee meeting, the 4th. All the committees kinda talked about what they're doing, and wants, and wishes are. And tonight, we had public works, and most of what we talked about is on our agenda to be approved, quite a few items that the committee recommends going forward on.
Thank you. Donna?
I attended the budget and finance meeting on Tuesday, where we discussed some of the things on the agenda as well, and the all boards meeting Wednesday night at the Legion.
Thank you. Turn it over then, Dan. How's public works?
Uh, very busy. We've got a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. Other than that, we're, Ampe Park should be ready to go here. We just gotta haul picking tables out. Should be able to have an opening ceremony for that. Grass is growing well. Trying to keep up with the grass everywhere else, and weeds, and spraying, and we've got everybody on board now, so we're fully staffed to try to tackle things. Just plugging away, and trying to make things look nice.
Sounds great. Thank you, Dan. I will note for the minutes, just because I thought of it, and before I forget, we do have Sam Ketchum here from our city attorney's office, like Kristen knows to make note of that. Tarek?
All right. Well, yeah, as Donna mentioned, we had a budget and finance meeting. You know, we do have a couple of significant items coming up, and yeah, it's gonna be, as always, a challenging budget year, I guess, as always, to try to, you know, go through the budget and see what works best. I also attended the all boards meeting with everybody else here. We did have a police interview, I think you mentioned that, Sean. We did not have a parking tree meeting, but I was with Neil just now at the public works meeting. And lastly, I was with Bill and Chuck at the pre-construction meeting for the liquor store, so that's going well. And I think, Bill, this week, they should be starting to do some work on it?
Today.
Today? Okay.
They were out there earlier.
There's a figure out there.
Okay, well, then I guess they started.
Yes.
All right, so that's it.
Great. Any questions?
Excavator, chief. Is that better?
Any questions for Dan or Tarek? Okay. Chief, can I turn it over to you for a little while, give an update on the events of the last week?
Sure. So, as you guys are all aware, we had a critical incident last Monday night. Unfortunately, that incident led to the death of one of the residents. As has been reported by the BCA, it was due to a self-inflicted gunshot wound. I have checked in with the staff that were there that night, as of now, they all report that they're doing well, with no adverse effects from that incident. Kind of where things will go from here is the BCA will finish up their report on that particular incident. It will get sent over to the county attorney's office for review, and then anything that the county attorney's office deems appropriate will come out of that situation. For the most part, other than directing that particular scene, Painesville's involvement will be largely restricted just to the initial call, and the investigation of that initial call. And then the BCA will handle everything else beyond that.
Any questions that anybody has for the chief? Okay. I will just say, go ahead.
I want to say before you get to do your comments, being that was all taking place, I didn't get my name on the agenda, so I'll just give you a quick update on the PD. We did have that interview this week. We also had interviews for the SRO position, the part-time SRO position. That individual was put through and is in the background phases. Of that, depending upon how that all shakes out, we will hopefully have a recommendation of the council to replace Officer Hegstrom's position in the school for the SRO spot. As it sits right now, we will get the background done on the first applicant, and then determine whether or not, or the full-time applicant, determine whether or not he will go through from there after the background. I know there's been some questions on public nuisances. Both Officer Davis and Officer Cader are working on the nuisance properties. They have seen some progress on some of them. Just all I ask is that people are aware that it is a lengthy process. The yards didn't get looking that way in a day, they won't get cleaned up in a day, but they are actively working those, and hopefully we will start seeing some significant progress soon.
There have also been, there's been a lot of discussion about an individual, and I will remind everyone that this is a person who I think is unhoused, that's been making some appearances on social media and at local businesses and things. And I'm curious, Paul, as to what, if any, services might be available through your law enforcement contacts to help this person. There was a post last night about, quote, "getting him out of here," and I was, I'll not hide that I was deeply offended that we're treating this person like a dog that we can just throw in a kennel and ship out. So, I'm curious as to what might be out there for social services interventions and help like that.
So, we have offered assistance to him, trying to assist any way possible. Unfortunately, he does not want our assistance, which makes it a little bit difficult. I do know that his means of transportation have been hindered, because he has lost his keys somewhere along Highway 55, apparently, which ultimately resulted in his vehicle being towed from the township. I believe he is actually up in St. Cloud now. So, I know we've got, and I've got to see if I have his card, fairly confident I do, but I do know there's somebody in town who does work with homeless individuals, so I'm hoping that that could potentially be a resource for him. But it really does take him wanting help, which is what part of the problem has been. Generally speaking, what I can tell you is, up to this point, he's been fairly harmless. It's just, his behavior and some of the things that have been going on are a little off-putting to some people. But generally, you know, he hasn't committed any significant crimes, other than trying to flee from law enforcement and some things like that, so.
I understand you handled that amicably.
What's that?
You handled that situation amicably, is my understanding.
We came to an agreement.
Full force of the law.
Something like that.
And I also had a, questions from a couple of individuals about trespassing him from their business based on things that have occurred. And I understand that the, our agency doesn't serve the trespass notices, which some other agencies do, but I'm wondering if we can work with Sam on at least developing a form that they could fill out? And I got this, because St. Cloud apparently has a form that you can just download off their website? If we could develop something like that and have Kristen post it on the website, so that even if you're not serving it, there's a form out there that we could direct people to.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I think we may have something similar to that. Bill's got one here, so I can talk to Bill and see, send that over to Sam and just get his...
Blessing.
His thoughts on it. But, yeah, and, you know, I know other agencies do it. We do not, because I feel, from the PD side of things, it's important that the business owner let them know their feelings, and that it's not the police saying they can't be there, that it's the business legitimately saying that, "We don't want you here because of your conduct."
And I'm not advocating that we change that, but I think if we can at least make the process a little bit easier, it would be helpful.
Absolutely. I just want everybody to know that's why. Because I know it can cause some frustration, so.
Another thing, I will go back to the force incident. Paul, I want to thank you for keeping me so well informed that night. I was not happy that you woke me up, but also grateful for the information. I, I think that it was helpful to be made aware of it as soon as I think you could. I know it happened a few hours before you called me, but I get why you couldn't call me immediately. I think it was also helpful, all of the information that, I mean, and I know you couldn't share everything, but sharing what you could, so that we could make decisions as between Tarek and I, on whether or not to call a special council meeting, or what needed to happen. I will say, Tarek did send out a message to the council, learning that it might be necessary to call a meeting. My thought was that if, if there was a reason to put one of our officers on leave or something like that, we might need to have a special council meeting to do that, or to address it. But based on the information that we could know, I think ultimately, we determined that that was not necessary, and I think, you know, reasons for that have been borne out now in the public releases. But I think, at least from my perspective, Paul, you did a great job handling it. We'll see what the full report says. I reiterate what I said in the public statement, which is that I expect the city will fully cooperate in whatever investigation is out there. I also express to you individually, I'll do it publicly here as well, that if you or the other officer involved need to take a personal leave of absence under our wellness policy, I would wholly support and encourage that, but I defer to you and the department on whether or not that's necessary. And then just my ongoing thoughts and prayers to the Alston family, because what a, just horrifically tragic event for everyone involved, so. That's what I've got. Anything else on updates? Hearing no, please not, I will move on. I don't see anybody here for the open forum. I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda, which includes the vouchers totaling $197,113.67 in the minutes on page one. Is there a motion to approve, or anybody want something called?
So moved.
Motion by Hasburg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Old business, the purchase of 122 Washburn Ave. We have a proposed purchase agreement and a resolution. Tarek or Sam, anything more we need to hear about this? Everything looks pretty much in order, from what I could see.
Yeah, just that they want to close as soon as we can, which I think, according to Sam, when I was talking to your guys, they said end of the month is probably most suitable.
Yeah, mayor members? Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Members of council, that, sorry, I'm hearing a little...
Oh, because of the microphone? Right now.
I'll roll out a bit. There is a closing date in the purchase agreement for June 30th, 2025. The practicality of that is a little dependent on how the title work goes, but I did talk with our real estate paralegal, who has been handling closings for you all, and we do think that that's doable, but it's just gonna depend a little bit on the title commitment.
Quick.
Other than that, I can say, I mean, this, this is a pretty standard purchase agreement. It's similar to recent purchase agreements that the council's reviewed and quite standard. So, happy to answer any questions about it, but otherwise, I think the staff has recommended approval.
There are no questions for Sam or Tarek. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution and the purchase agreement.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-18, approving purchase agreement for the purchase of real property located in the city of Painesville from Bullum J. Koopman, and the purchase and sale agreement for such.
If a motion by Brick is stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Potter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay. On to new business, the street CIP. Dan or Chuck, gentlemen?
I can take this one. In your packet is a copy of the updated CIP. As the council's aware, this is something we look at sort of on an annual basis. Really, the main only changes are on the CIP are in the first few years, primarily shifting the downtown project from 2027 to 2029, to give some additional time associated with some of the redevelopment talks that the downtown committee's been, been having for over the past several months. So with that, we shifted that to 29, and then we replaced that with a few of the original streets that were on the 29 project, and one that was on the 31 project, and put those up. There's been some utility issues that have come up along some of those roads that have increased the urgency and prioritization of some of those projects, so. And then the rest of the 29 project that was originally planned slid down into the 31 project. So, those are really the only changes associated with the CIP, and with that, I'd answer any questions.
Can you just talk a little bit more about what we've seen in terms of issues and why we're bumping this up?
We've got some sewer failures that have been called by customers and clients, and gone out and televised, and the mains are failing in our section of the line, because the homeowner has replaced from their home to the right-of-way, but the right-of-way to the main hasn't been replaced. We've got a couple areas that, we've dug one or two for sure. We've got another couple that lined up, they're gonna have to be dug, because they're failing. It's old orange ber, your old clay. So we felt the priority would be better to move those up, because of this costing, we're digging into streets, and the homeowner isn't paying for that portion because of what's gone on in the past. So, with giving more time to the downtown project, we felt we could better address these and get them off the books, and save ourselves some costs in the long run.
Are the roads generally in poor condition, or is it just the stuff underneath that we're looking at?
The stuff underneath. Unfortunately, the road, well, most of the roads in town are all pretty good.
Yeah. The reason why I ask is that I'm just having this thought now, and it might be totally insane, so tell me, but is this something where we could do that?
Lining?
Yes.
It could be lining, but you're, now you're lining up the laterals, which is an extra spot, an extra cost. We could do a price comparison, and see what that would come up to.
I was gonna say, usually as part of the process, you know, this identifies the projects. Once we get into a project, the first thing is doing that preliminary engineering report, and that's really where we look at, is it possible to just line some of these sewers and not have to open cut the streets?
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks, gentlemen. Any other questions on it? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve street CIP as presented.
Motion by Hasburg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right. Next, snowplowing equipment. Dan?
What I included in your packet was some examples of equipment that is out there. What I'm looking for to get into snowplowing is three pieces of equipment. Like to purchase a loader, and go a little bit on the newer end for a loader, and so you got one real reliable piece of equipment. Loaders work great, because they can articulate, get around cul-de-sacs, and some of the various straight streets in town. A joke. But loaders are efficient that way, and you can use it, you have a quick touch, you can drop the plow off, use a bucket, if you gotta push snowbags, put on a pusher and move parking lots, and in the summer, you can use them for moving material during the summer. The other piece of equipment I'd like to get is the signal axle, dump truck, which is also maneuverable for inside the city, and would have a wing and a plow on it, and it can also haul snow, because we're gonna need to haul snow. The other piece of equipment I'm looking at is a tandem plow truck. Bigger box, more hauling capacity, still set up with a plow on the wing, so we can plow with it, and then we have our existing plow truck, it's kind of small, but that would give us another backup. We use that for sand and salt right now, but it could be a backup plow truck also, so it gives us a little redundancy, and then we can afford to buy older equipment, save the money now, so we can get started and still have pieces of equipment, have a little redundancy, and not have to spend so much money. And then down the road, we can replace pieces of the time as the need comes, or the finance comes. So I've researched it, visited with a lot of contractors, and some other people I know that have had experience along with me, and this is the best solution I could come up with, to be economical, and give us our best chance to have a good result. I did put kind of numbers where I thought the expenses should be. Because we are not going to be able to find anybody to load for us or plow for us that's just kind of dumb.
Once we get the equipment, do we have a plan for putting bodies in the trucks?
We do, but if you know more volunteers, we'll take them.
Okay. Neil likes driving around all the streets and checking it out.
Yeah.
I should no longer have my class B thing.
He doesn't like getting up early, though.
We're, hopefully, we'll be able to pick up a couple of part-timers.
Yeah, that's...
But if not, then it'll be all in on deck.
What was the number we came up with, Dan, for three pieces of equipment?
Twenty. At the public works board, it was 180 for three pieces of equipment.
And there is money in the funds to cover this. It's, well, it's pretty much the street and all the water sewer. Most of the equipment would be thirty, 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 something like that.
Yeah, if you look at the last page of the extra package you got, I broke down where everything would come from. The loader has to break into every department, because it could be used everywhere. The other big project we're gonna talk about, that can be broken down into every department. The one that I can is the plow trucks. That's gonna have to come strictly up streets, so that CIP will take the biggest hit, which is not tremendous, but it'll take a bit of a hit. And the two trucks there, I'm hoping to get the best deal on, so it's not gonna be a major impact.
Yep.
But to get started, it's, there's gonna be a cost, and I think I made that cost as valuable as possible.
Well, it's coming in below where I was expecting it to, so I will give you a credit there. Do I have any rough estimates yet on annual cost, and whether this is going to be an increase to what we've been paying VAS, or if we're looking at maybe saving some money? And I don't know that we can...
It's gonna be a wash.
Yeah.
It's kind of what I'm thinking we're gonna come up with. So what I had recommended here by going through all this is, because most of the best deals you can get are on, online, so I'm in Wisconsin's, the Dakotas, Minnesotans, Iwas, and I'm talking to some of the major vendors that get trade-ins, but everything goes on a timeline, so by the time I can get back to the public works board or the council, you may miss out on some very good deals. So I'm asking is that we would, the public works board wanted Tarek and I to, okay, agree, and then make a bid.
So as I understand the ask and the recommendation from the public works board, it's to give you and Tarek, this sounds a lot more relaxed than I think you mean it to be, but sort of carte blanche, to bid on equipment up to 180,000.
For two trucks and a loader?
Three trucks, yep. Okay. So the recommendation is to give the public works director and city administrator authority to bid on necessary snowplowing equipment up to the amount of 180,000 for the combined three pieces?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hasburg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Potter. Any further discussion?
I just think it's a really necessary, you know, some people have contacted me being concerned about the way that some of the roads have been handled lately, and the way they'll be handled in the future, and it's, it's one of the main things that people expect from the city, is to be able to get to work on time, so.
Yeah.
You just have to, yeah, I mean, me personally, but I think we'll just have to, I mean, whatever we gotta do.
No, and I, I think this is the necessary plan as well, in terms of purchasing, because it's expensive equipment, and you're right, the bureaucracy is a mess, so.
I think down the road, we'll probably want to put them all on our depreciation, so in five to 10 years, there's money to replace.
Right. This is to get us, I mean, we're starting from zero, so.
All right. Calling the question, all those in favor of giving authorization to bid on this equipment, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. We will temporarily recess our business meeting. We have a 6:30 public hearing. We have a 6:30 public hearing on modifying and enabling resolution regarding the Painesville EDA. So for that, I'm going to open the public hearing and turn it over to Tarek.
Well, as you are aware, we are trying to issue bonds for the purchase or for the construction of the new liquor store. And according to state statute, we can't do it as a joint entity. It has to be just City of Painesville EDA. Right now, our EDAP is a joint powers board. So looking back into history, and I think Sam could probably add some more on this, is that we do have an EDA established, but of course, it hasn't been active. So we need to reactivate this board in order for this board to authorize the issuance of a bond for the purpose of funding the liquor store. So that's kinda the highlight of it. And then Sam, maybe a little bit more detail on what the enabling resolution is.
Mayor, members of the council, Tarek, thank you for the introduction. Tarek did a good job explaining the background. This did come up when I think the city was intending to have the EDAP board issue the bond for the liquor store. There's a specific requirement in the joint power statute that just says that entities that don't have the composition of their governing bodies cannot issue bonds. So because the EDAP board is basically made up of what it is, which is members of the community, I think also over the township board, they couldn't issue the bond. And so Bond Council for the city noted that and raised the issue. And we did determine that the city actually has an EDA. There's been actually two enabling resolutions, which sort of creating the EDA, both were, I think, 20 to 25 years ago. And this is not uncommon. I actually just worked with another city that sort of resurrected its EDA. But what's in your packet tonight is basically a resolution that modifies that enabling resolution. It provides all of the powers that are under state statute 469, which includes an HRA, an EDA, and then city development district. So it's a pretty standard resolution, but it will allow you to issue bonds and basically do what you're proposing to do with the liquor store. One important note of that resolution is that it basically makes members of the council the EDA commissioners. So that's one of the things in there that, you know, maybe is different cities do different things for, but that's what we're recommending. And I believe Bond Council recommended the same thing as well. Other than that, it really has pretty standard provisions in there and standard limitations on the EDA's powers. Other than that, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone actually present, they can speak on this. Sounds to not be something that generates a lot of interest in the public, but happy to basically open it up for council questions or if there's anyone that wants to speak on the EDA, they should be, you know, allowed to make public comment.
So Sam, I will let you know there is no one here from the public to speak on it, but does anybody on the council have questions? All right. Hearing anything else then that we need to know, gentlemen, before I close? Then I will close our public hearing, reopen our business meeting, and we'll be taking up new business seat, modifying the enabling resolution regarding the Painesville EDA, which is page 22 of our packet. This is the resolution that Sam and Tarek were just talking to us about. The first action on that would be to...well, we have a meeting right after our council meeting tonight, essentially to schedule a public hearing on the bond issue. But first, we need to create the board. Or recreate the board. I'd entertain a motion on the enabling resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-17, modifying the enabling resolution regarding the Painesville Economic Development Authority.
I'll second.
It's a motion by Hersberg, seconded by Brick, as stated on the action sheet. Any further discussion?
Question.
Donna.
Should I abstain from voting on this as it pertains to the liquor store?
Sam, do you wanna weigh in on whether council member Potter should abstain from voting as it affects the liquor store? I don't think it's a terrible idea. I don't know...
I mean, because I'm still employed there until I put in my two-week notice or something.
Good question.
I don't think you have a conflict on this.
I'm just...I'm just making sure.
Doing the EDA, yeah.
Doing the bonds, yes.
Yeah. Mayor, members of council, I...there should be no conflict on the just enabling resolution, but that's a very good question. I appreciate council member Potter raising it about the actual bond issuance. And I think we can deal with that...we can cross that bridge when the time comes, but there should be no conflict with voting on the enabling resolution.
And then Sam, I have a question on paragraph 2.03 regarding the makeup of the board. It would be my preference that Tarek be a voting member of the commission as his role as economic development coordinator or whatever that title is. Director. Is that something that we can do by amendment to the resolution or do we need to bring this back?
So I understand your question. You wanna make Tarek a voting member of the EDA?
Yeah, that would be my preference. I don't know how the rest of the council would feel about it, but...
Works for me.
So my preference would be to amend 203 to read, "The EDA shall consist of a governing body of five commissioners, shall be the members of the Painesville City Council." Well, it would be six commissioners, but the city council and the city administrator.
Mayor, members of council, I...the only...my only concern is about how we got here in the first place, which was the EDAP board didn't have the composition. I mean, I think...so I just don't wanna miss something there.
Okay. Then let's leave it and you and Tarek can stew on it. And if it's only we amend later, we can amend it later.
Yeah, the enabling resolution can be modified at any time. Tarek, do you have any thoughts about that or are you aware of any EDA's that have city administrator, director, so it's going to be...I think I've seen that, but I just honestly don't know off the top of my head.
I know there are some, but I don't know how common it is, yes.
Okay. Well, if it's not...I just don't wanna miss something with the...why don't we...
We can get back to it.
Why don't we connect on that and then we can always bring back the permission and modify it to deal with that part.
Okay.
So if you don't have the answer off the top of my head, I think it's probably our case. I just don't wanna miss something about that.
No, I'll do a safe and sorry approach. All right. Any other discussion before I call the question? All those in favor of the enabling resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. It's done. Okay, we have a couple of closed sessions. I was thinking we'd finish sooner and we'd take up the second one first, but we're at 6:40, so.
I think it would be...
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot we had an update.
Yeah.
Okay. New business D. Tarek, can you talk to us about the Greater Minnesota Grant?
Yes, this is something that we've been working on. Chuck and his team had both on the mank, myself, and then the developer who's interested in building an apartment building on Furchy's property off Lake Avenue. This is the Minnesota Housing Finance Authority. They have a grant program. What the developer is looking for is assistance in building the infrastructure. And if you look at the back of the packet there, it's really a road with a cul-de-sac and then the infrastructure that goes along with it, water sewer, to kinda help offset that cost. And it will be a public road, public cul-de-sac because there'll be other lots on there for future development. So according to the grant program, which the grant deadline is June 12, this is why we're trying to get this done soon, it's a 50-50 match. And what I wanna highlight here, if you look at the resolution, there is an estimated cost of doing this project, around $713,000. So the 50% grant is roughly 356 and change. And the other half, what they're calling is a match, and we let the developer know that the match will be coming from them, not the city. So our contribution to the infrastructure will be applying for the grant for them. So right now, all we're asking for is, you know, your approval that we submit this application. And once we find out if we get the grant or not, we can finish working on the other items with the developer.
So as I understand it, even though there's a cost on here to the city of 356, 451, that would be passed on to the developer?
Yeah, because if you look at the resolution, it says general funds be a development agreement. So we will need to have a development agreement in place, which says that the cost will be covered by the developer. Otherwise, we don't have to do this project.
And I presume that development agreement is going to indicate terms of payback and all of the other things?
Yes.
Any questions for Tarek before we approve an application for the grant? I'd entertain a motion on the grant.
Moved to approve Resolution 2025-19, applying for the MHFA Greater Minnesota Housing Public Infrastructure Grant.
Motion by Brick, as stated on the action sheet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All right. Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. It's done. That is it for our business, aside from the closed sessions. We'll tackle those. We do have some April month-end reports. Those are on the city's website. There's also some things in here, but staff do a great job. Bill, looking down at you before we forget, as we talked about bonding and stuff, this is a little premature, but I'm just letting you know. Tarek shared with me a message. We did have a resident reach out regarding some of the financing numbers for the liquor store. So just probably before the bonding meeting, Tarek can share that email with you and you can get numbers put together so that we have that information. But the question was just basically, how is this gonna pay for itself?
We have those numbers?
Yeah, I know you do. So that's...you know, we've talked about them, but that way, if you can just get together with him before the public hearing, share it with the person who is concerned and go from there.
Perfect.
So...all right. Otherwise, anyone have anything else here? Dan and Chuck, are both of you sticking around for the closed sessions?
Two of them. One of them involved in my department.
I figured you were sticking around for the second one. I didn't know if you wanted Chuck with you or not. I'll defer to you. Okay.
Go where it's up to you.
And Bill, are you taking off and coming back then at 7:00 or are you done for the night?
I'll just go sit in Bill in his office till we're ready at 7:15 or...
Did send me a message she's okay with you using all of her pens.
[laughing]
Not touching.
All right. So it is 6:45. We had noted on our agenda that we would take up a closed session at that point. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session under state statute 13D03 and 05 to discuss an offer on real property located at 325 Kierah Court. It's parcel number 70.39118.0538.
So moved.
Motion by Brick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. All those in favor of going into closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay. Are we good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So the council did meet in closed session. We took up an offer on the property at 325 Kierah Court. I reached an agreement with the prop or with the proposed buyers, and I would entertain a motion on the price to approve that sale. Basically, we'd be approving the sale of the lot to Tom and Patty Kramer's in the amount of $22,000 and asking staff to execute the necessary documentation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay. Then we'd go into another closed session to discuss property at 410 Business 23, parcel number 70.3979.0000. Same section of the open meeting laws regarding offers on real property. Anybody wanting to make a motion to go to closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Brick to go to closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Potter. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Dan's salary.
It just appears, right? No? Okay.
We're good. And I'm reminded by Chief Buckner that she would like a bonus because he's the one that brought this property to our attention. [laughing]
We did.
Part of being a good civil servant.
We'll give you a group hug afterwards.
I'm just looking out for the suit.
Okay. We appreciate that.
I might have to take my comment back.
Would you do the council a favor? Open the door, please. Since Tarek already sat down.
Oh, geez.
I'm getting my cardio.
All right. So council met in a closed session to talk about an offer on real property at 410 Business 23 West, discussed an offer on that property. I believe the recommendation for the council is to purchase that property for 201,000, contingent on ensuring the removal of an oil tank has already been done and that there's no soil contamination. If that's the case, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we pursue that.
Motion by Hersberg to purchase the property for 201, contingent on the oil removal. Is there a second?
Plus closing costs, you have to say that in there.
Plus closing costs and whatever else it might be. Sure.
I'll second.
I'm seeing a nod from Neil that that's a friendly amendment and seconded by Brick. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. And then I'll just make a public record on why we're doing that. That building is the CNS towing building. Looking at using that for storage of the equipment we authorized Dan to purchase earlier this evening. That building would suit the city's needs quite well, so hopefully we can get that taken care of. With that, everyone, we stand adjourned and I remind the council that we have an EDA meeting in 11 minutes. Thanks, everyone.
For a fraction.
Sam, I'll try to get it though.